Hey.
Hello. Yeah, Emily, the two of the three issues that we've been touching on yesterday, I think one of the old issues. So. It's 176 and 177.
All right, hold on, I'm gonna pull them up.
If you remember the context of these.
Oh, that that sounds like they're mine.
Yep.
176.
And 137.
All right, let me refresh what I was thinking when I opened them.
It's a while ago.
I feel old now.
Giving you the heads up so that you could spend like five minutes trying to run.
All right. Okay, I remember 176, almost like it was yesterday.
Awesome. Yeah, I know those, the other link PR issue was on the reporting process or like the templates that you created, right? So that's that, that's that address.
I I think the PR for adding the security resources is, I think that closes that issue out because I had asked whether or not there was anything else outstanding. So I think we can just close it.
Okay. Does this cover the same thing or help us a bit, something broader?
The CVE vulnerabilities, I'm still reading it, sorry, I write long text. At least early on I did.
Everyone, just waiting a couple of minutes for people to join in, I'm gonna put into meeting notes as usual.
Okay, I remember 177 now and I know kind of the outcome of it and I believe that it is remediated with that PR.
Okay, with the templates PR.
Yeah, because I talked to Chris about this not too long ago, so I think we are good.
Awesome. Everyone, just for doing the meeting notes in the chat, we need scrubs today, so if anyone can volunteer, that would be awesome.
I close 177.
Awesome, thank you. I'm gonna add the link to it, just so that we can track off. No, that's not the right one. It's just the C and the TOC portal press.
What?
Okay, this is all maybe that's all.
Okay.
It's myself. Yeah, everyone, put the send again. We need the script today, if anyone can sign up for that, that would be awesome.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Excellent.
Last point is that we unfortunately lost because we wanted to move to another organization or just picking up.
I think.
Because just the volume is what I was talking about.
Being here background.
In demand, in critical space, not only for our company, but but in many other organizations. And I know it can be can be difficult at times to be in that position, so just a big thank you as well. But I don't know if you might just turn in with any other closing thoughts before we wrap up today.
Hey, Mark.
I do, yeah, thank you, so.
All right, someone has admin.
Yeah, I was gonna say if someone has admin, maybe they can.
Very important to everyone.
I can rejoin.
Questions.
I don't have it right off the bat.
Something we need to ask, which is.
One second.
To to Robert, if you have anything specific or direct.
I don't think I've actually ever heard it come out so loud and clear in this in a context like this.
Second thing I will say, and probably the more important thing, kind of more mercy kicked off and and just in general, I think this is for me the most important.
Thanks, apologies, we are working on resolving this.
Me has continued.
Brandon will rejoin us shortly.
Very, very big way.
Abuse my power here.
We talked about this.
Not abuse. Yeah.
Sorry, I mean, exercise. Okay, cool, um, so wait, let me, let me backtrack, but the note to the. Chat, we have a pretty short agenda today, so so we'll see how things come along, we should get some time back. So let's get started, as usual, this meeting is being recorded. Advised by C N C F call conduct as well as the the tax security code of conduct. This will be recorded and uploaded to YouTube as of the date. And we need scraps, we have scraps, thank you, Ash, for volunteering to describe. And if you have any updates, please put in your name in the attendance, put a note if you have any update or you want to talk about anything either during the update or in today's agenda. Cool, so let's get started, so first, let me just sub to new members who have a new new folks in the call, they want to introduce themselves. I think it looks like everyone's. I've seen everyone before, so I think we don't have new members today. Okay, so triage of content issue, so this is just a reminder for those that. Were not around when this was introduced, basically at the start of each working session meeting, we spent like five, 10 minutes on on triaging certain issues. Today, we have two issues that we'll be taking a quick look at. Share screen. Go. Um, so. Emily, I mentioned to what she wanted to them before what the call was starting, so it's gonna hopefully keep it short, so these three are up for triage. Utilization of security reviews as initial skill settings for projects, I think the idea here was to use the output of security reviews to kind of. Provide a starting point for our security documents or projects. So this is a pretty old issue, hasn't had any traffic for a while. Emily, do you wanna talk a little bit about it?
Absolutely, so this issue came out of my first CubeCon and talking with Justin Cormac. And kind of understanding a little bit more, well, not first CubeCon, while ago, but kind of understand more about the lack of security faults that exist within a lot of the cognitive projects. And one of the ways that we had brainstormed during one of the diversity lunches was being able as part of our existing security view and security assessment process. To provide or to assist projects with developing security documentation and secure configurations for their applications and their projects. So we kind of have a few other initiatives around this area, there are some work from the surveys that we've done about security faults, this is one way that we could potentially do that. And generally speaking, the Security Pals program has the capabilities to assist projects and identifying areas, but not quite to the level of granularity of like. Here's the secure configuration within the documentation and you actually would have to hunt for the less secure configurations. So this is just the idea, if the group is not interested in pursuing this at this time, we can close it, drop it in the backlog, we've got lots of other projects that are also equally as important and interesting.
So maybe just bring out that security faults issue as well. So I think what what we'll do at this point is we'll think this issue to the other one, and as usual, what happens with most of our triage. Triage processes is we're gonna paste this into the general on tech security chat for some extra feedback. If we don't get any reinvigorated interest from the group within like a week or two, we just close it up. And but we make sure we have it documented to any of the current ongoing, ongoing issues, so let's just think here. That's it, okay. This one, C V so vulnerabilities found during security reviews and audit, we had a discussion five minutes before the call started. So I don't want to spend too much time on this, basically this was around like reporting on CVs. This is partially addressed by the template, the the security document templates that we introduced earlier, maybe about a month and a half ago. So this is how do you report CVs and things like that. Emily, since this issue, do you wanna chime in a bit more?
Yeah, sure, so a lot of this was around at a time before GitHub had their security advisories integration and probably about the time that they were looking to become a CVE authority. So this is very old, but the idea is that when we're performing security reviews, we may come across insecure configurations or vulnerabilities associated with projects for which they don't have a responsible disclosure process. The new security resources section of the repository has great resources to help projects get up and running with what those security documentations embargo vulnerability disclosure, all of those fun things. So it's kind of already met from that perspective and with the recent updates to the contributor site from our partners at Tag Contributor Strategy. We now have instructions for teams about how do they manage the GitHub security advisories feature as well, so this is pretty much mitigated. The only extra little bit would be how do we apply that within our security review process, which is is currently discussed, I think there is an active PR or one that was recently closed that introduced this, that. Security views are responsible for following the responsible disclosure process of the project undergoing the review.
Awesome, thanks Emily, as usual, if you have any comments, put it in the issue, we'll post this in the chat as well. Assessment listings, create a close assessment folder, the organized assessments, I think this is kind of a. Just the ability to have every new everything in it, so I think this is still relevant. So for this, it sounds like we would want to to just bring it up in the community again, I think this is a good first issue. So if anyone knows, folks that wanna contribute to the community or if you yourself want to have like comment, kind of like a quick contribution to the community, this would be a good issue.
Sorry, maybe you could just tell a bit more, I mean, maybe I'm the only one who doesn't know much about about the assessment thing itself, the assessment process.
Yeah, so, um, that's a lot of depth to this, so maybe I just like give a quick overview and then it's likely that, so we'll touch on this again. Usually at our coupon sessions, talking about what the reviews are going to a bit more detail. And we'll likely talk about it again after coupon when we get like the new influx of members. But just a a very high level, you know, the the security assessments and reviews kind of started as a way. You know, in the project, the project, the the C N C F project process right from sandbox incubation to graduation. And the idea was the TOC wanted the ability to really have a better assessment of what security is for a particular project. So this is something that we started, the the main aim of it was to kind of see where a project is in terms of the entire C N C F ecosystem. So you know, for other different things, it talks to how to fit into the ecosystem as well as, you know, a look at what the security hygiene of the project is, right? It is not, it is not a code review, it is not an audit. It is small to see, you know, this is that security process, are there security incidents that are being handled? Looking at the overall design architecture of of the project to see whether there's any red flags, it says like C I C D pipeline. Are there certain decisions in the design, for example, you know, rewriting a pasta or using a library which may not be. I'm using a a weird passing library or something like that, right? So just general hygiene of a project and also to inform the TOC of is this project. How does this project fit into the security system and C S C R?
Interesting.
Yeah. Yeah, I I think there'll be opportunity for us to to dig deeper, I think as well as the coupon session, so if you're interested, oh, you know, as usual, just reach out to any of us. Cool, so I think that that's it for the the triage section, so sharing here. Okay. And let's go onto the next item, which is. Review of the time zones, we don't have that anymore, TOC meeting updates. Do we have anyone that was a TOC meeting that had any updates worth noting here?
I believe Matthew mentioned that Bill Pax was presented during the meeting last week. I don't think he's on the call right now.
Yeah, yeah, I remember that, so yeah, and and dress was presented on behalf of this of the stack, it was a kind of Q C update meeting. So it's just like different tags talking about what they did, so we talked about Bill Pax as well, some of the things, the pipeline. Before. Okay, so fun stuff before we get into project, get into the agenda, project updates. Different working groups, any any updates, so maybe you can start with. We'll go from bottom up now, since we went top on last time, so cognitive security map. Actually, we have any any updates on that with the with the version to that script?
I know no updates on that right now, we probably start closer to CubeCon, but do you have any design updates? I think we reshuffled the design team as well, right, the C N C F team?
Yeah, so so the the ticket and services was marked this resolve, but they didn't contact us, so I I kind of reopened that to you that goes, yeah.
Thanks.
The security controls group. Okay, I think security reviews. I think we just hit the update with Bill Pax, talk us to doing is finishing, that was update from Matthew. We are looking to start our goal, we are looking inside the Argo review towards. After coupon, so it was the end of October, so if those are interested, please put your name down on the Argo assessment issue and that should start shortly after coupon.
For custodian, just to, I've tried to fix a bunch of the. Items noted in the PR, there's a few open questions there, so those who have contributed to the PR review, thank you, and hopefully have addressed the issues, but if there are other issues that remain, I'll try to get to those as soon as possible.
Okay, you mentioned open questions, is this open questions for?
A lot of them are for me.
Okay, all right, I just wanna make sure that we have.
Sorry about that, Emily.
No worries, I saw the emails, they're on my list of things to do.
Yeah, all right, okay, so as long as we we have, we have continuation of that, make sure we're not blocked. Okay, sounds good, I think next under this, serverless white paper. Any one of updates? No one, okay, let's go, supply chain, I think we have address and my phone both on, so any any updates?
No updates, full swing.
Awesome. And audio, white paper, audio, audio recording, and the updates. Nope, okay, awesome, so let's get right in. Let's see whether anyone has any updates that are not on the agenda. Mark, you, I see you have an announcement to make about the IEEE document, do you wanna speak to that or do you want me to just make an announcement? I I'm assuming you're on two calls.
No, this time they canceled it, so here I am, hallelujah.
Awesome.
So, hey guys, I missed you, I'd rather been in this meeting. So this IEEE standard issued today, it's hot off the presses. It took forever to do this, it was a bloody slog, to tell you the truth, it's a really hard topic, how to do ethical design in software. And systems architectures, this is really focused on autonomous systems, but it really applies across the board. So there's a link there, you have to get your enterprise to buy the standard. I've worked on this thing for, I think, four years, so the extent to which it's going to influence people's design. Practices really comes down to whether people like in this group find something of use in that, so you know, I I encourage you to try to talk somebody into buying it and. And taking a scan to see if there's some things in there that you can, that you can apply in your design principles that'll help with with ethical principles. And some of this has to do with, you know, security and privacy stuff that tends to be more close to the privacy side than the security side, but. It's more about our public responsibility as technologists and system architects and so there's there's interesting stuff in there, even if in the end. It leaves you scratching your head as to why that text was put in it. So that's my pitch.
You think it's it's something that's well, maybe doing a short presentation about one of the next, the next sessions?
I don't know, if people are interested, I'd be willing to to give an overview of it.
I'd love to hear more about it, but I mean, I've got an E F F sweatshirt right here, so.
There you go.
All right, we'll put up a, we'll put up a message in the in the group, see how many thumbs up.
Okay.
Awesome, thank you, Mark.
You bet.
It's like we have no other updates, so also I just know this, Axel, thank you for volunteering to describe. Okay, so the first agenda item we have is, I've been here two today, so the first one is on stack meeting schedules. I think the revised on contacts, yeah, I think I just, I think it's interesting, brought up that, you know, some of the attacks are meaning a little bit of less, a bit less frequency. Some of them have taken like a month off, like sabbatical kind of thing in between, and I think we wanted to figure out. Know what are people's thoughts on this? Whether we would like to maybe reduce the frequency or maybe take a couple of weeks, like an entire month off, I just like these weekly meetings. Emily, Andres, Ash, feel free to chime in, I'm not sure that I understand anything there.
Yeah, we've been going steady for quite some time.
Yeah, we are the most active tag.
We are the most active tag, we produce a ton of great material, but we also recognize that there has been a lot going on and that we have a ton of ongoing projects. So we want to make sure that we're balancing everybody's willingness to contribute as well as your personal health and well being, so we meet weekly. There's been discussion, like Brandon said, about taking a month off or potentially adjusting the frequency at which we hold these meetings. So we wanted to open up the conversation to the community to get a better understanding of how everybody feels, do you have trouble making these meetings? Should we reduce the amount of them that we have in a given month?
I I'm I'm happy to answer, I mean, I haven't been coming to these meetings for very long, as as people know, however, I find them very interesting and I find I get a lot out of them. I do think once a week gets, can get a bit much, even though it's it's only an hour, but you know, it's easy to say that we've got a lot of only an hour meetings here and there. I I would be, I would be fine if it was slightly reduced, but I know maybe like three out of four, something like that, I mean, I. Less than that to me feels like it's gonna get too few and I think there's a lot of interesting stuff coming out of it, so yeah, happy, I'm very interested in hearing other people's opinion.
You know, the the thought process is moving to a biweekly, but beyond that is we have all of these kind of other kind of side projects, the security reviews, all those, right? To me, those take up, you know, instead of having like the full group, having everybody re re reconvene to be able to kind of talk about those statuses when there's actually more meaningful time than a week, because usually it takes more than a week to. To articulate what happened during that point, so that's kind of my two cents from from the pop desk here.
Yeah, this is a good, this is a good barn pop, like I think we have, you know, the supply chain working group, we have the the policy working group as well. And most of the folks and the controls working group, so like most of the folks here are kind of like double booked on at least one other one.
A a quick thought from my end, because I know. I don't want to be the contrarian, but one one thing I I do like about the fact that it is fairly frequent is I can miss a meeting and not feel like I've missed out on a whole lot. So I mean, another thought is maybe just saying, hey, maybe like we have an hour long meeting once every X weeks, but maybe like a, you know, a 15 minute check in or a 30 minute check in. So I think that's, those things are still, I think, useful. So I think that's those things are still, I think, useful, because even if I miss one check in, it's not like I've missed a a whole lot.
Gotcha. Yeah. Uh, I think one thing that that we've tried to kind of do from the start, although maybe not successfully, is that we've tried to make the operation of the the tech not relying on meetings. So obviously, I think certain things are easier on meetings and like we have presentations and stuff like that as well.
So pace and cadence aside, I I do feel we could use a a month off to regroup, recharge, come back with with that energy. We should probably have a at least one meeting following up to keep gone to talk about what we learned there, how the cloud native security can go. But maybe we can plan after that to take four or six weeks possibly. Call it our end of year.
So I'm hearing a bunch of different things. Um, I'm all about trying something new, trying it once and then iterating. Because you know, that's kind of like agile. Um, so I think that we should pick something to try it and see how we feel. Um, I think taking a month off is a good idea, but I also recognize that there are a lot of folks that get hyped up about CubeCon and want to jump on a call with the security group. I mean, that's is one of the ways that we get a lot of her membership. So if it's a balance between every other week for six weeks and then we reassess how we like that or if it's three out of four in a given month. Um, and keep in mind that we do have several key holidays coming up across the world. So we want to be respectful of everybody's um various vacations and holiday leave.
Maybe we can do two weeks in November and then we can take December.
I really like the sound of three out of four more than every three weeks. So like meeting every Wednesday, the first three weeks of the month, taking a week off. And maybe we just s- like spread out that month off. Make sure like there's not a they pull the plug.
I I have a question actually, because I I know I struggle with the C N C F for that a little bit. Um. How do like, I'm, I'm just thinking if we have like tree out of far, right? Um, is that a good way to, like, does everyone have uh somehow tracking just the 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 security tech events? Or you have to add the entire C S F calendar to your calendar?
I added my own custom event.
Okay, yeah, so I I just, I just thinking like, I think that's that's what I did as well. Uh, so I think it'd be a little bit tricky.
Yep, me too.
I also do that.
I I put something in chat but didn't speak up. I'd rather prefer, I kind of like every other week or twice a month. Three out of four just feels like a lot. But I know we have to pick something and and go from there. I think that's a good idea. Pick.
Yeah.
I think three out of four, about half the time is three out of five, right?
So I guess one of the things I'm trying to optimize for is all the other meetings I need to attend. And and so if it's, you know, three out of um out of three in a month, then I can't do any other alternating recurring meeting. Whereas within every other week, I can insert other recurring meetings in the sign in that time.
That's a good point, yeah.
But I'm I'm willing to try whatever the majority wants to go for.
I think what we can do is, I think we we've have, I think, three options right down on the table now, three or four options. Um, I think we should probably make a poll for then the channel, see what people think. And then experiment with it. I think that's most likely what we can do.
Last option could be just meeting format, so official meeting biweekly and the week in between is like a social or a office hours. Come talk to other security people if you want, but it's not a a meeting per se.
I also like the of like a working meeting for the other, every other, where we like get some GitHub issues done or something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's close to Michael's check in idea, which I think I found more convincing than my three out of four idea when I heard it.
All right. So it sounds like to me we have a bunch of different options. Who's going to take the action to consolidate all the options and generate a poll in the Slack channel? Don't everybody jump at once. I know you all want to do it. Yes.
So we have, we have what the check in, the month off and the every other week? Playing every other week, every other week.
Every other week.
Okay.
Can we add the uh the Brandon Lom ask me anything? No?
I thought that was a concert series. I'm sorry.
Oh, wait, that's a special. We're going to charge for that.
Selling tickets, we start $10.
I show up.
So, yeah, it sounds like those are the options. Um, if you can get that poll in the channel and let it and well, I'll pay attention to when it's posted. We'll send an email out to the mailing list as well, so folks can jump in there and respond.
Some sounds like we have a plan. Okay, excellent. Cool. So, um. Other agenda item was on new technique nomination. So as you know, it's been a while since we've uh patent new techniques. Um, given that recently around that I have have, um, you know, assume the chat positions.
They were elevated.
Yeah, so uh we will need as 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 the group is growing, right? Um, I think it will, we see the the need for additional leadership to help and expand on the scope of what we do and also making sure that new members and our existing members feel like their voices are heard and that they feel empowered to, you know, do great work. Um, so we want to talk about T L nomination. In the past, uh, this has been done uh through uh so called like channel nomination. Um, and we we the the are two parts of this. So one is we want to document the process, we do the nomination. Number two is we want to kind of open up the T L nomination um process to have community nominations as well. Um, so we are introducing this idea of community nominations where uh communities, um, committee members nominate uh who they think would be put T Ls uh together with the justification and based on the nomination uh the chess with, um, you know, pick based on, you know, the number of nominations, um, you know, different, a bunch of different requirements, whether they would fit the role they had. They have the uh skill set to meet the role uh as well as, you know, T O C has to also approve. Um, so the idea is the community comes out of nominations, um, um, you know, these get brought to the leadership and to the T O C. At the end of it, we um provide some data about, you know, what happened, you know, the the ideas we want to provide. Um, more transparency into the process as well as, you know, for members of community to to um, to influence the decision. So. Um, Emily, do you want to share that?
Yeah. I I actually, uh, because it was merged in before the meeting, um, I posted it in the chat. Um, so we went through and we documented it. Um, we talked through about what are, what were the previous tech lead nominations? Like what were some of those requirements? Um, and we wanted to make sure that we were very transparent with everybody to understand what it is that we're looking for as well as understand where the C N C F is headed. So the C N C F has been doing a lot of changes as of late and trying to drive more diversity across the community. And we want to make sure that we're we're standing true with the C N C F and their goals and initiatives and efforts. So we we took the time, we went through and we documented a whole bunch of requirements. This is our first pass at getting these done. So these are very likely to change at some point in the future, depending. We realize that this might be a high bar for a lot of people, but we also want to be very clear in case anybody is interested in becoming a tech lead in the future, that they kind of have a good understanding of what that path to take to look like, to be eligible for it. So it, I dropped the link in the chat, please feel free to review it. Um, there's a timeline that we want to be able to um go through this. So I think Brandon and I, we had discussed about two weeks to like let everybody familiarize themselves with what this process looks like. And then we would formally announce it and kick it off. And we're looking, I think we said about a month to collect all of the nominations and then some time for us co chairs to go through it. Um, because we feel that there's a lot of really great folks in the community that we may not actually be aware of some of the fantastic work it is that they're doing. And we want to make sure that they're visible and they're elevated to our awareness. Did I miss anything?
Nope, I think this, that's pretty much sums it up. And you, any thoughts about it, any questions? Any ideas that maybe we we didn't include that we should include a nomination process?
I I think a lot of us will have to go read the document, so.
That's fair.
Yeah, probably makes sense to um to also cross link what the tech lead actually does and what their responsibilities are. So that it's not just here's how you get nominated, but here's what we expect people to do.
It's already linked in the doc under caveats of technical leads. There is a link under have responsibilities. So that is there.
Okay, perfect.
Um, I also wanted to make everyone aware that we also have a tag security governance channel, which is where we have conversations about this kind of stuff uh with the larger uh tag security groups. So if you have questions about technical leadership, um, co chairpersonship or just general like the running and the administration of the group, we also have that channel.
Sorry, can you say the name of the channel again?
Tag government, tag security governance. Brandon just posted it in this uh in the chat.
There are a whole lot more tack meetings that happen in the week besides this one, once you become a a T L. Just want to let you know about.
That's why we have the huge shows look up.
You're not supposed to say that. So like you could sell it. You see, you're supposed to like hold off on that till the end.
You get to see my smiling face so much and you get to get messages from me throughout the week and Brandon and Aradna as well.
Sold, sold.
It's a fun time.
Behind the scenes.
And also, if folks are interested from like a career progression perspective, understanding a little bit more about managing a very large community. Um, this is a good opportunity for that. So if you're interested in that space and you want to learn more about what does it mean to be a tech lead within this security um tag or a co chair, please feel free to reach out to any of the existing tech leads, previous tech leads, previous co chairs, current co chairs. We're more than happy to help talk to you about what it looks like. These are skills that you gain and can you reuse in your regular day to day careers.
If you're also interested in the C N C F, this gives like a very good opportunity to see about how a lot of it operates inside. Cool. Yeah, so um, we'll leave it out there. Uh, like Emily said, we are going to wait one or two weeks. Uh, if get some of feedback, we can incorporate it into the process. I believe the plan now is that we will open one swap for community nomination for tech. Um, we'll see how it goes. Uh, if it goes well, we'll have more in the future. Uh, yeah, so in about two weeks, you should get email um for nominations. And we will see how it goes. I'm very excited to see, see everyone participate in this. Awesome. So that is the um, everything that was on today's agenda. The announcement for next week's schedule is we have a presentation uh for myself and Mariush on Spiffy Tonya next week. Um, so, yeah, that'll be exciting.
He was, he was a teaser.
It's a, it's a control plane for workflow identity. So you know how you have like all these like awesome control and management planes and U I's to control user identities and manage them. Uh, the question we're asking is, why don't we treat workflows the same way as users? I mean, this is um pretty much what those have become a big part of um identity access management and cognitive.
Another way to put it, it's a supervisor for spy deployments, correct?
Yeah. Exactly. Cool. Um, so any, any other uh thoughts, any other items that we wanted to bring up?
Yes, for those of you that may not already be aware, Cloud Native Security Con is happening October 12th. Please, please, please register either in person or virtual. We have an excellent lineup with two tracks this year as well as a C T F. So stay tuned for more information about the C T F. Check your Twitters for fun little tweets about what's going on, but please, please, please register. We're trying to turn this into a much larger con around cloud native security and kind of drive the the community in that direction. So your participation is always welcome and very appreciated.
Pop your tongue to that red button.
Yep. If you see tweets, go ahead and retweet them, get the name word out there. Uh, I think uh myself and I'm Trace and maybe a little Emily, I don't know, uh, will be doing some emceeing. If uh Vega and I don't beat each other up on stage, uh, but you know, we'll have a good time together. It's gonna be good. We're gonna have some fun, everybody. So there's a great movie theme uh that we're doing as well. It's such phenomenal stuff. I mean, again, this is the the sum total of all of us kind of showing the world how awesome tag security is in so many ways as we do. So I'd love, you know, everybody's participation and it would be awesome.
I'm just going to flag you for rule number one of Fight Club.
We'll have a good time.
Yeah, but whether you're planning to be there virtually or in person, uh, we could use your help. Would love to to count with your help. Uh, so, yeah, hit us up if if you'd like to get involved. I are going to be there either online or in person.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, seems like um we are at the end of the meeting, so give our ground 15 minutes back. Thank you, everyone. Bye bye.
Thanks.
See you all next week. Bye bye.